This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.
We'll call the meeting to order at 6:03. Excuse us, Dylan, Committee Member Dylan, other committee members are here. Approval of the minutes of April 13th, 2022.
There was one question I had. The one of them said Eliza seconded the motion. I forgot where now, but.
She does like to feel important.
I just, I said I made the motion and then it said she seconded me. So now I'll have to find.
We appreciate your support.
My answer for court, no.
We appreciate the support.
Move to town, we can get you elected.
Oh, God.
Just on the under budget, my name is just spelled incorrectly. It's spelled correct everywhere else, but it says, that's okay, Juliana, it's right in the other spots, Julian.
Oh, that's really good.
And then right below that, is it, it's ARPA funds, A-R, not A-P-R-A? A-R-P-A?
A-R-P-A, yeah. American Rescue Plan Act.
So right in, so, yeah, under, yeah, where it says A-P-R-A funds, it's actually A-R-P-A.
Okay.
ARPA.
Here it is. Page four. Right up, second bullet down, Allison made the first motion, Eliza made the second.
I think that was me, Austin, yep.
All right, well, then I'm confused why it says Superintendent Bonneville mentioned the budget is not yet ready, yet Juliana made the first motion pass, Allison second, and then we approved the preliminary. Budget is not yet ready. Five million dollar increase.
What? Where are you?
She's under the number three budget. Yeah, I think those first two things should be scribbled out. What is it? Budget, Michelle, where it says Superintendent Dr. Bonneville, and then the five million dollar increase, there's no five million dollar increase, that would be phenomenal.
We would love it.
Sweet. Yeah, ARPA, I didn't look at this either.
On page four, under reopen the school to the public. Bullet number two says goal to return to have parents eating lunch with kids and/or snack.
No, we took that out.
We actually took that out.
Yeah, we said they're not going to.
They're not going to be, yeah.
And then, can I say back under budget?
Mm-hmm.
Instead of a 3.85, it should be a 3.58%.
Yeah.
And do we need explanation given about the $163,000 will be used elsewhere?
That's the ESER funds, isn't it?
Yeah, we used 167 from ESER. Oh, will be used from ESER. Okay. So it should be 167 will be used from ESER funds. E-S-S-E-R. All capitals. Oh, then you can cross off the ESER funds will be used elsewhere underneath there. You know, I can show you this later, Michelle.
She's like, you guys are going too fast.
So can we make? Well, I guess this is a point of information. Can we make a motion to approve with those suggested edits, or do we have to wait?
There's two ones. One, we can wait for them to come back, or we can, if we think we've clearly identified all the adjustments, we can make a motion to approve them as amended.
Okay.
What's the body want to do? Do you want to see these back again, or are you comfortable with that?
Well, she said she was going to hand her notes too, so I think I'd be comfortable if you wanted.
So you're making a motion to approve them as amended?
I will. I thought he was starting it, so yes, I will make the motion.
Second.
No more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? So moved.
They're very nice minutes, I think.
Yes.
Very clean.
Yeah.
The budget section makes it look like it was a minute and a half discussion, which I kind of like. Public comment. Anybody from the public that wants to speak? No? Close, public comment. Circulation warrants, I believe Denise forwarded to everybody, the committee members, the warrants.
Yep.
I'm assuming there were no questions or objections to them? Okay. And I don't believe we have any announcements of correspondence, and I don't recall any emails that came into me that would be pertinent to read tonight. Nobody else has anything? We'll move on to the budgets. Quarterly reports.
And those are in your packets.
Starting on page eight of the packet.
Yes.
So this quarterly report, does, does it already reflect the proposed line item transfers that we're going to take up next, or no?
It does reflect the ones that we are going to take up next, and it reflects ones that you have passed in, in the past.
Okay.
P-A-S-S-E-D in the P-A-S-T.
To wit, on page, page nine of the teacher's salary, so we still have a $28,000 surplus, even after the transfer that's before us.
Correct.
Okay.
Yep. Yep. Did you say page 28? No, I, look at your nice.
Page nine.
It's page nine, line 68. Available balance, $28,542.
And people can these big numbers look at. Oh, I got you, okay.
Line 68.
Right. So did everybody get a chance to look at it, or do you want me to review it page by page, or?
I skimmed it, I don't know if, do you want to hit the highlights?
Yeah, I like the, like, explanation a little bit, the commentary is helpful for me.
Okay, so on the first page, there really isn't too much. There is a pending adjustment of $2,000 under school committee legal. And that is for the additional lawyer for negotiations. And then, under curriculum supplies, I took 1490 from there, because we did have some money. I left some money in there. We've, Kate has been absent, so we have not, she has not done a lot of the spending that she typically would have done, so I felt comfortable taking that from there. And then, on the next page, you'll see at the top what John was referring to as in the teacher regular line. There is 28,542, that's in column S, that's the budget balance. So there's that money left in that line item. A little bit left in retirement, and a little bit left in sped teacher's salary, because we had done a line item transfer previously, that was a little more than what we actually ended up needing. There is some money left in the librarian salary line, and that's due to not having filled that position. And then, professional development, some money's left. Class supplies, which I assume will be spent down coming up soon as teachers replenish their supplies. That's about it on page two. Well, let me do the line item transfers. So there's 27,000 I took away from the teacher regular, 610 from the sped teacher. We needed 11,276 for the substitutes. And the substitute line was used quite a bit this year, more than typically. Sped aides, we needed a little bit additional of 2,470. And then I did say that we took the 8,202 from the librarian. And then we added 3,635 to the class supply general, which has primarily been just paper this year. There's been a lot of purchasing of regular paper, and construction paper, and colored paper. Technology supplies, 10,050, that increased. On the next page, there isn't too much to report. Custodial supplies, there's 4,468 that we need to increase the line by, which doesn't surprise me, because I'm sure they're doing lots and lots of extra cleaning. The electric, we needed 8,175. So we're going to have to keep an eye on that particularly for next year. Maintenance, I was able to take 3,190 just to switch it to the maintenance of equipment supply line. And there still is a little bit left there, which I imagine will be spent before the end of the year on various repairs and whatnot. And then, programs in, out of district and in district, there's nothing left in those lines, and I'll say a little bit more about that after. Heck administration, that's a fee we pay to the collaborative to use their purchasing, to get their professional development, various items such as that. And then transportation, there's 14,219 dollars left. And that is, would have been bigger, but our special education transportation was increased this year. But we also had a bus that has been reduced this year because of lack of drivers. So they have been figuring that out this year, but that will go back next year to being regular. And I haven't forgotten, I'll get your numbers for June for the under mile and a half. And then, so that brings us to the bottom line for the general fund, which leaves us at about 98,211 right now, which, a good portion of that will be spent, I'm sure, through the remaining two months. The line after that is circuit breaker, and that's what I wanted to draw your attention to. So if you went back to the top line on that page, you'll see the programs out of district, we've spent 205,450, and we have 30,814 encumbered. But in addition to that, we had budgeted 12,698,000. And then, just today, I got word that we received 72,365 in extraordinary circuit breaker. So we have a little bit of a, there's a typo there, you'll see there's 72,365 in both the approved and the pending column. So that balance isn't what it is, it's less 72. So there is a little bit of a balance that we can put towards something else that's special education-related, which will free up some monies that maybe we could switch back to school choice. And then the other is vocational, which at this point looks like it's overspent, but that's on the town side. And then the last page, I put together, this is the first time I've really updated really what we have altogether for grants at this point. So we have what's called the REAP grant, it's actually called S-R, S-A now, I believe. There's a little bit left, that goes all towards teacher salaries. There's Title I, that goes towards teacher salaries. Title II, which pays for mentoring, for the most part. And then, the title, I'm no good with Roman numerals.
For aid.
Thank you. And that's all been spent, and that's spent on various, various things that are related to Title I expenditures that you can do. Then we have the 94142 grant, which we pay $30,000 for paraprofessionals, and that has been spent. And then there's your preschool accounts, that's what we budget for each year. School choice, the same thing, there is a little bit of a balance right now, the 29,177, so that'll go back to our balance. And then we have ESER II, which at this point is, got a little bit left, 4,485. ESER III, which is what we're using 167 of for in our FY '23 budget. And then, what we just received, which we're going to talk about next, is that General Appropriation Act money, which came through, and that's at 125,913. And then rural aid, and that rural aid has been spent to date.
Okay. Bobby, the transportation, the extra, well, right now, the unencumbered $14,000, is that within our budget or on the town side?
Outside.
That's, yeah. And are you comfortable with the vocational tuition?
I will go back and recheck.
Actually, that's saying we're overspent by 100,000.
Exactly. And what it is, is a lot of times when we give the towns the figures that we have, they actually reduce what we give them and, and budget a lesser number, because oftentimes we have a whole bunch of ninth graders who apply, but then don't actually go. So historically, they've been able to reduce that number, and it could be that just this year, that didn't work out for them. So I'd have to kind of look at that, but.
Okay.
I'm pretty sure that is what the expenditures are now.
So from total, from your total line, on page four, line 256, total general fund, 98,211. The only number that's not under our control of that 98,000, is that 14,000?
Correct.
Right?
Yep.
And then, I, I have another question back on the teachers. What's the, what's the thinking behind, what caused the surplus? I have a guess.
There was so much movement.
Between people leaving and people being hired?
People leaving, people being hired.
Reduction to halftime or .9 or.
Exactly. So we had one teacher that was .5 that took over for another teacher who had left at a 1.0. And then there was another teacher that was .5, who split the class with the teacher who took over for another. That teacher went to 1.0, but that left a .5 position open that never got filled. The math interventionist didn't get hired until.
January.
Yep, and then, there was, and I do have it here somewhere. There was.
Are there any long-term subs right now, that are filling a teacher's role that would be paid out of the substitution line?
Yes. Yeah, there is one, I think, right?
Yep.
Yeah.
Part-time.
Yep. Um.
Oh, two.
Is there two?
Third grade.
Oh, I had it written here, oh, right here. So then we had a, yeah, then we had a teacher who took over. We had budgeted 79,591, that teacher came in at 59.
Okay.
Um, another one. Thank you for.
So all those adjustments were, were, you're able to fill or backfill with reduced salaries, then, to the extent that you knew about them, did they all get carried for, and are they accurately reflected in the current budget?
Yes. Yes.
Okay. So we don't have another 30,000 surplus?
That's I know of.
No, not unless things change again like this, which there's, when there's that much turnover, it can make for a real.
Okay. Other questions, or anybody?
I just had one for the school choice line. Is, that's not reflecting the total balance, that's just reflecting the balance from this year?
That we budgeted for, yeah. That's not reflecting the whole balance. Yeah.
And you said that you wanted, or ideally, you would like to see how much in school choice?
Well, you'd like to see at least what you're spending each year, which we're, we've been overspending now for years, so that we spend in the current year. So we spend our, any balance we carry forward, plus we spend out of the current year's money that we take in. Ideally, what you'd like to see is at least your, a full year's balance, if not maybe better than that. Because school choice is so volatile and changes.
Yeah.
And you don't have the up-to-date figures until late, I like to keep it at like one and a half times what we would typically use, just to have that small cushion. We've been trying to build that back up for years and years and years, so. But that's what I'd like to see eventually happen.
So without, without getting into the discussion on the 125 right now, just staying with the general fund, 98 minus the 14 or the 12 for transportation. I mean, whatever classroom supplies and stuff that's going to get ordered between now and the end of the year is going to drive that number down, but then at the end, we would have another series of transfers from those unspent funds to school choice, to put the money back in there, right?
Yep.
As our last act.
And including taking a look at that circuit break, did you just have somebody who went out? On a 45-day?
No.
Okay.
Not for months.
Okay, okay, good. So I think right now, all our special ed costs are reflected in this.
Mm-hmm.
So we will have a little bit of that circuit breaker that I can also put to the general fund to pay for special ed class, which will free up some more money there. So we do have a little bit, and I will do that in, probably won't be until either your July or August meeting that you'll see that. Because we, I'd like to shake everything out and then reconcile with the town, and then make all those changes so that we're all on the same page.
Okay. Anything else on the numbers? Do we want to talk about the 125 now?
Can you, if you would be so gracious as to.
Back up to the transfers?
Yeah. And so we went over all the transfers, but if you have questions, I can answer them.
So this is page six, seven? Seven.
Yeah, page seven.
Yeah, Bobby is looking to do some transfers to increase $100 to school committee advertising, add $2,000 to school committee legal, add $11,276 to substitutes, $2,470 to special aid, special ed aides, $3,635 to class supplies general, $1,050 to technology supplies, $4,468 to custodial supplies, $4,676 to fuel, $8,175 to electric, $3,190 to main of equipment supplies, maintenance of equipment supplies, to be taken from $1,490 of curriculum supplies, $27,548 teachers' regular salaries, $610 teachers' special ed salaries, $8,202 librarian salary, and $3,190 from maintenance. Total transfers, $41,040.
I'd like to make a motion to approve these line transfers as listed.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made in second, any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Not you, but.
None?
Deanna.
Yep.
Thank you.
All right, so next on the agenda is the Fiscal Year 2022 General Appropriation Act One-Time Assistant Payments for Districts With Pandemic-Related Enrollment Losses. Who wants to tell us what our legislators did to us this time?
Well, I'll let Deanna do the number thing, but, so you got 125,913, and it really was as a result of numbers of students enrolled that had dropped from, due to COVID-related. And then, this year had increased, and so it's for the loss of what potential revenue you could have gained in.
Through the Chapter 70, had they continued their enrollment numbers.
Right, and it does come to the school committee without further appropriation, which means that you can spend it on anything you so choose.
And we can spend it next year.
And it can be carried into FY '23.
So just as a side note, the DLS did put out a bulletin on the guidance. I did forward it to the town accountant who acknowledged receipt of it. So I know he's going to book it on his end, however it needs to be done.
I know, thank you for doing that. And only 126 schools qualified, and you had one of the larger ones in the, in the states, that was really nice to know. So if, as Bobby said, if enrollment numbers decreased with COVID and then increased by at least 10% this school year, that's reflected in that sum.
All right, so we have a newfound pot of money of 125,913, it's one-time money. That's going to come in, we have until the end of next year to do something with the money. So unless there's a thought tonight that needs to be entertained, I think we try to develop a plan. We, I mean, fingers crossed that the budget passes as it was submitted. That would be part one. Part two would then be getting the ARPA, the four ARPA requests passed as submitted, and then we could come back and look at the whole picture and figure out where to go. So maybe as much as I'd like to take. Well, yeah, I guess we could still take July off as a committee.
I think so.
And deal with this in August.
Yeah. John, do you know when the ARPA decisions will be made?
The Select Board is considering holding a meeting on that sole topic. And I believe the chair is, well, I know she is, the chair is polling the members to try and find a date, and the week after next is what she's focusing in on. Nice screensaver.
Oh. I know, that's funky, huh?
So, any questions on the 125,000? We're going to stick it in an interest-bearing account? I hear Bank ESP's got a 15% seven-day special running right now? Just tell them Eliza sent you? Okay. So then we'll go on to the next item on the agenda, which is new business, Presentation of Entry Plan Report and Findings.
And I'm sorry that you received the, the actual report so late. It's literally been a work in progress, I've probably put in 100 hours in the last three weeks, and that's not an exaggeration. So, and today I had the final look-through with the administrative team, which was really helpful, just to make sure that I was on the same page. So I'm not going to go through this page by page, so you can read that at your leisure, and if you have questions, you can either shoot me an email, or you can ask next time, but I am going to give you the, I am going to review the highlights for you. So page one just talks about why I did this, because I'm brand-new, and I really wanted to get to know what our district's strengths, weaknesses, and we're such a unique district, being with five individual districts. So I really used this year to meet with people, interview people, participate in meetings, meet with town administrators, look at various data. And therefore, I came up with five emerging themes. So if you, if you were pressed for time and could only read one page, it would be page two, which I'll go over all of that in detail, but those were the five big themes that emerged, which we're going to go into detail in a little bit. I do talk a little bit about the different research that I collected, so there's qualitative and quantitative. Qualitative is what you see here, it's descriptive, anecdotal. And quantitative is the numbers, things that can be counted. So for all that, I use various DESI reports, MCAS scores. Edwin Analytics is a report on the security portal in regards to MCAS data. I looked at special ed data, budgets, various handbooks. And I also gave out various surveys throughout the year, and to, to families as well as to faculty. So I'll just review the survey results quickly. So the latest survey was to the school choice in and out, and 89 families responded. And we just really wanted to know, why are you choosing to choice your students in, and why are you choosing to choice your students out? And, and most of the people who responded choicing in were, were choosing our district because of our reputation and our strong positive school climate and sense of community. Smaller class sizes were also noted, and the primary reason for school choicing out respondents were either that they lived, the, the student's school is closer to wherever parents work, or the lack of diversity, so. So if a Latina family had moved into the community, um, like in West Hampton where there aren't, you know, Latina, Latino students in first grade, they might have chosen to go elsewhere, so their student felt more included. So that was noted as well. Another survey that was sent was the superintendent's survey, looking at our strengths and challenges. And this is really what faculty and staff really valued, were the small class sizes. That staff are really strong in their content knowledge. They've got wonderful relationships and connections with our students, and our buildings are very safe and well-maintained. And parents thought the same thing. They also appreciated the level of communication with administrators and teachers, um, as well as the support the administrators have provided them. And when I asked the question, what makes us such a unique district, these are some of the, uh, the teacher responses that, um, it's ability and willingness to permit artistic license and professional autonomy, clear and consistent communication, and that they feel listened to and trusted by administration. And according to parents, they know that staff really care, and that it's a small, welcoming community, and we really set up students for success. So some of the areas of improvement that were listed were, um, at that time, it was, it, climate, the school climate was a little bit lower, because that was in the midst of COVID. So people were just kind of burnt out, frustrated, um, th- th- that's when that was sold. That number, I'm sure, would increase drastically now. That we could do a better job of aligning our curriculum, increasing diversity, and increasing district collaboration, which I'm really proud of the progress that we have made this year in that area as well. According to parents, uh, they like to expand art and music programs, uh, econ- academic evenings, um, and diversity. Some of the things that they really appreciated from us also is that we really stress the whole child, which means it's not only academic, but we look at behavioral, social, and emotional well-being as well. Arts and technology, and high marks for the advanced in AP classes at the high school level as well. During the school year, I also was looking at our core values in order to determine our district vision and mission statement, and these are the things that, uh, most popped up, was our, the ability that we want students to be able to independently and patiently problem-solve and think critically. We want to build on student, um, building character in students by showing kindness and empathy, and acceptance of others, and the ability to communicate and collaborative, collaborate effectively. Having a strong worth ethic, grit, perseverance, mindfulness came up as well. Um, and the ability really to value diversity and think about things from different perspectives, which is why it's important that we do try to increase our diversity. And I tell this to the administrative team too. It's not helpful when everybody at the table agrees with you. It's important when you have different perspectives. Everybody brings a different component to the table, and by hearing those perspectives, you yourself change your opinions and thoughts as well. So the same thing with students in classrooms, that, um, by making our classrooms more diverse, it'll bring not only different cultures and perspectives, but cultural proficiency, just learning about students' backgrounds, um, and their heritages is extremely important, just to diversify students', um, knowledge of these things. So when they go off to college, they're not so insulated as they, as they currently are right now. Uh, as far as social-emotional data, it really just came from DESI's, um, vocal survey. Um, and I'll talk a little bit about that later. I did look at SPIFI, SPIFI survey results, which look at risky behaviors for students in grades eight, ten, and twelve, but I only had 2013, 2015, and 2017, so I didn't really include all of that. Although it is interesting to note that, uh, the latest survey in 2017 did say that Hampshire regional students do use, um, alcohol, alcohol, marijuana, and prescription drug use more than the average Hampshire, uh, county student. But that's five years ago, so when we look at the results that they just, uh, they just did the survey now, um, we can talk more about that in the spring, but I purposely left that out, because that's, that's five years old, and-
Yeah, so one, one of the things, uh, that could be a bridge from the, uh, the town side is the town has, um, I think it's ten thousand dollars a year for at least three years in, in marijuana mitigation funds that need to be spent on programs, educationally related. And I know the Select Board's looking for the, has talked about asking the Board of Health, the police chief for recommendations and all that, so-
Wonderful.
It might be something.
That'd be wonderful.
To consider, keep in the back of your mind that there may be some funds available to do something.
That would be great. I also looked at MCAS data, and I'm not gonna bore you with that, but if you just want to flip to page seven up top, for Norris. Norris's scores have really increased significantly over the last several years, with the greatest growth in math in grades three and five. And in large part, this is due to the alignment, implementation of the Bridges Math Curriculum. And strongest ELA in math scores were in grade five, uh, which were considerably higher than the state average. So the Open Court is a new literacy curriculum that was just started, so we'll see how those results play out, um, from this spring. And West Hampton Elementary and New Hingham will be looking at, uh, changing their literacy programs, and Open Court is one of the ones that they're considering as well. So they're gonna be visiting, um, Norris, just to see, talk with teachers and see how they like it as well. Uh, demographic overview, I'm not gonna go into all of that. You've heard that before, numerous times. Uh, but our district enrollment, um, has dropped by two hundred and fifty students over the past two years, uh, past ten years. A lot of that is COVID, um, inflation, and just that families, um, are, families aren't as large as they used to be, and they're moving out of the area as well. Although I think that's changed a lot in the last couple of years, so that will be interesting to note as well. I just included all these charts for you, just so you could see where we all stand, um, when you're looking at all the different schools. And likewise, you've seen this before in previous reports that I've shown you. But as you can see, when you look under all the Norris columns, um, for, for low income, we are the lowest, um, of all the schools in the district. We do have the lowest number there of twenty-one percent, um, which is considerably low. It's half of what the state average is, which is forty-three point eight percent. Which is really sad when you think about that. That's, that's incredibly high. Special education, that is an area that we are gonna be working on to try to see about decreasing those numbers. Because as you can see, Norris is at twenty-seven percent, which is higher than the state average. And this could be for a number of reasons. One, during COVID times, um, parents were, um, you know, requesting ed evals left and right, worried that their students weren't succeeding. And we wanna try to meet all the students' needs, so we're gonna, that, we expect that number to drop-
And not having interventions.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And that is a, that is hugely important, because this year interventions were only given through, in the lower grades. And as Elisa pointed out, the math interventionists came in January, so, um, thank you for reminding me of that.
That's okay.
See, likewise, in high needs, and high needs means that you fall into one of those categories. You're either low-income, or special ed, or an English language learner, or any combination thereof. After high school?
Are we allowed to ask questions as we go, or you wanna hold them?
No, no, go ahead.
So for the high-needs chart, are any of those students double-counted? Or, like, if you fell in multiple categories, you weren't counted twice?
Yeah, that's a great, um, question, and I couldn't, I couldn't tell you that, only that these are DESI numbers. I would have to pull up the individual rosters by school to figure that out.
I think they do double, like if they're special ed and they're high-needs, it's on both charts.
Right, so if, yeah, so if you're, uh, let's say if you're special ed and low-income, you, you would show up, right? I don't know if I answered that question. It's been a long day.
It just seems like the number is pretty high, so I was wondering if any of those are the, like, if there's two, uh, places for one student?
Yes.
Know what I mean?
That many times happens with the low-income and the special ed.
Right.
Or ELL and low-income.
This is like a Venn diagram, I assume?
Exactly.
Like, some people are in-
Yes.
Both circles.
Right. That's a good way to think about it.
When it says forty percent high-needs, is that forty percent of what?
Of the entire population of Norris, or just forty percent of those in those two categories?
No, that is forty percent of, of the whole population at Norris.
Forty percent of the whole population in Norris is high-needs.
Correct.
That's why I was asking if someone's double-counted.
Forty-eight point six percent.
Half the high school crazily high.
Yeah.
At the high school, we were at, for high-needs, thirty-four point five.
Who's, oh, New, New Hing, yeah.
New, New Hingham's at forty-eight.
Yeah.
Right.
And I had one other question around curriculum. Just curious, how often are, do we turn over curriculum for math in ELA? Like, on average? I know it's hard to say, like, exactly, but-
I would say, well, how, at Norris or in general in education?
At Norris, yeah.
This is our Bridges, Bridges curriculum for math. This, I think, is our fourth year, third to fourth year. So I would say five years. Because before that, we had- Envisions, right? Envisions, and before that, we had investigations? I think so. Yeah. When I came in, we were just moving from investigations to envisions. So we went through envisions, and now we're in the third to fourth year of Bridges. So I've been there. This is my eighth year. And for ELA, this is the first time we've changed since I've been there, so it was eight years. But we really, we had an approach. We didn't really have curriculum for ELA. It was the-
Foundations.
Well, we added foundations, and we added Hegarty, and we just added Open Court, but prior to that, it was the workshop model. So we provided continuous professional development to, to do better in ELA, but we didn't change anything.
Curriculum followed.
Right. That's why we changed.
And if you get curriculum, like, we got Open Court this year. Next year, when we get all the stuff, is it the same exact thing, or is it updated? But any new, like, do they revise it?
If the company has a new, um, addition, we would ask to purchase the newer addition, so.
Okay.
Yeah. Right, right now, we're just trying to replace the consumable things.
Right.
With the kids, yeah.
Yeah, I'm just curious, as, you know, it seems like year one, it's sort of getting everyone kind of working on that. So if it's every five years, then you really have four dig-in years on that.
Right.
Whatever that model is.
The, does the state not track English language learners?
They do. On the back.
On your, on your chart, you only have fiscal year twenty-two for the statewide average?
Oh. No, that's my mistake. I couldn't, sorry. I will fix that. They, they certainly do.
I don't know the answer, but I'm wondering about the forty percent high-needs. I think, and the same thing with New Hingham. So I'm thinking, kids have to be counted more than one time, because I don't think that fifty percent of the New Hingham kids can be high, high-needs, so I-
Yeah, well, if you take our low-income and our special ed together, that's forty-eight percent.
Yeah, and look how low-income rose from sixteen percent to twenty-one percent. So in the last, you know, five years, you've had a jump from, you know, thirteen percent to twenty-one percent. So that, that's really important to note. But these numbers, I think, will, will go down in the next couple of years, will go down significantly. That, um, you know, unemployment's at a better spot right now, and these special ed numbers will, will go down. So I wouldn't worry about, that's nothing to worry about. Okay, thank you for pointing out. I will fix that. I couldn't even tell you where the, where that's at.
I'm sorry?
Can we talk about fourth grade math, like, as far as?
Fourth grade math.
Fourth grade math.
You have a question?
The fourth grade math from last year was not good.
Not good.
Not good at all.
So what's the intervention? That's a big class, too, right?
That's the fifth grade, yes.
No, the biggest class is fifth grade going to sixth grade.
Fifth grade, so this is-
So fourth grade on here-
Well, so fourth grade was-
Was last year.
Was the fifth grade. And we had a change in the way we, um, conducted fourth grade because of the pandemic, because we didn't want kids switching. So we concentrated them in two classes instead of everyone going to three. And maybe that wasn't the- The teachers that weren't necessarily that- Most experienced teachers teaching math.
Okay.
So we realized that.
Yeah. So they probably need extra help now, because this is the fifth grade class that's in right now. That's the big one.
Yep.
Okay.
Correct.
Okay. And then we'll get MCAS boys from them.
She's doing amazing. I'll give her some props.
So they do MCAS this spring to compare?
Did, did fifth grade take the math assessment this year?
They just-
They just did.
Right, so when those numbers, that's what, that's what Julian's saying.
I'm hoping for huge student growth.
Yeah, okay.
They're even doing, like, after-school, fifth grade is even doing, like, after-school math.
Okay.
She does, like, she has, she does-
She does a great-
On her own, offers all this-
That's great.
Great stuff. And I think there's two teachers that even in the morning- And we also have a co-teaching model going on right now with, um, a special ed teacher and the regular ed teacher in the class, the whole, the whole period. So the special ed teacher, it's almost like simultaneously helping all the kids. Something before school, though, because like, they're getting, some of them are getting off the bus early- Yeah. And working with, like, on their own, a couple, like, right now.
That's wonderful.
So the, um-
It's awesome.
Just, so I have, I have another question, but only just because I'm intrigued. Under plans after high school?
Mm-hmm.
So I'm assuming that for ninety-nine percent of that, or ninety percent of that, those are the, those are the traditional students that, you know, twelfth grade, they graduate and go. But there's a portion of our population that stays with us, right, for years thirteen and fourteen? Would they, would they be like in the two-year public? Or is that two-year public as in? Community college? Like, do those kids, do those kids just disappear?
The S, no, the SPs are not included in this number. Because they're, they're still in school until they're twenty-one.
Okay, so they're not part of the-
No, no, these are, um, once, once they leave us at graduation, because those kids, although they graduate, they still come back.
These are the typicals, as we call them in elementary.
Okay.
Right? Isn't that what you call them?
General ed population or typical?
Yeah, typicals. At pre-K level, don't you have to have so many typicals for-
Oh, oh, oh.
Peers.
Terminology, it's, it's not peers.
Typical peers.
Okay.
Yeah, when you're looking at the plans after, after high school, this is the year, oh, see, I had a different chart I was gonna show you as well. This is the highest year, uh, I think eighty? I, I, it's somewhere in, later on in my report under Teaching and Learning, I, I referenced some more, some more numbers. So I wanted to let you guys know that. And for pupil expenditures, I-
Yeah.
Yeah, that's horrifying to me, so.
I know.
We're working on it.
I know, and I, I felt bad putting it in, but I kinda feel like I needed to.
It's like a huge equity issue, right? Like, so, these kids are gonna go to the high school, and, I don't know. Yes, it's a work in progress, I hear.
I did, I did like, when, when you get down to per pupil, you switch the columns. You move us around, so if, if you're not really watching the headers. You think we're under eighteen thousand, eight hundred and forty. I'm like, whoa!
Oh, my God, that's so funny. I didn't even think of that. Different chart.
Just on our toes, making sure we're really reading it.
You're welcome.
I'm like, you can let that get out to the public. We're gonna have an uproar.
Difference of, like, investment in each child.
Yeah.
Right.
Were there any more highlights that you wanted to?
Yes, there, well, not in this section, but there's more to, more to come.
Are we good so far?
Everybody okay?
Continue on?
Yep.
Okay. So for emergency, emerging themes, these, these are five of the biggies, and really, it's really derived from the overarching statement that we really are the hidden gem in Western Massachusetts. That came up many, many times. So we're gonna first start with meeting the needs of, of students. And you don't really have, if you wanna read the report, I'm just gonna give you the highlights, um, over here. So if you're, if we're looking at the, the strengths of our district. So I really like that, that quote, uh, that, "No one falls through the cracks here. The collaboration between teachers, special educators, pairs, interventionists, service providers, counselors, and administrators to meet individual students' needs make our district special," and that is very, very true. Our, everybody is really deeply committed to, uh, the entire school community, and every student feels connected to adults here in the, in the, um, buildings, where they feel respected, heard, and appreciated, where diversity is valued. There is a very positive and supportive culture where we believe in kindness, empathy, perseverance, and collaboration, and respect, and advocacy for self and others as our core values. Ninety percent of all, uh, 2021 graduates plan to attend a two- or four-year college, and that really is the highest it's been in five years. Which is, uh, you know, during COVID times, that, that really says a lot right there. So we really value class sizes are small, and per pupil expenditures are generally high, which is really valued. A lot of the school choice families attributed to our special ed programming, and here I, here I do mention the, um, the pro, the language-based program at Norris that was started a few years ago is actually saving the district almost two hundred thousand dollars annually. And we hope to have similar results with the neurodiversity program. Uh, Elisa did a great job running the meeting on Tuesday, where we talked about what our district, what the vision and mission would look like for that, and we were kind of just, kind of fine-tuning the program. So I think it's really, um, gonna be very successful here at school, and not only for the students in, in that classroom, but for the students in the whole school. Because like we talked about before, um, disruptive behaviors disrupt learning across the board. Really high rate of participation in advanced courses. So advanced courses does not mean AP courses. So it's eighty-six percent of all students in grades eleven and twelve participated in advanced courses, So it's eighty-six percent of all students in grades eleven and twelve participated in advanced courses. And almost half of those were special ed in grades eleven and twelve. That's a huge number. So let me explain what that means. So it does mean advanced placement testing, but it also means certain courses are designated as advanced. Be it an honors class, um, certain math classes, um, like stats, probability, calculus, and some science classes such as physics, chemistry fall into that category. The state kind of labels out what those classes are. So that's very, um, impressive. And we did have, um, fifteen high-needs students participate in AP testing. And, um, half of them scored in the three to five range. And that's really where you wanna be, in the three to five range. That's where you can get college credit. And that really means that you have, um, a firm understanding of the content that's been taught. Um, all schools do have, uh, building-specific data teams that analyze data, um, and that's when the interventionists come in. Clark School at the high school does bring in an additional revenue of twenty thousand. And the hearing impaired students who attend there, they are tuitioned in and they do come to the high school to receive credit. So that's important to note. A big topic is addressing the needs of the whole child with social emotional learning. So we do have curricula in each grade level from, uh, the pre-K, the pyramid model, to responsive classroom, second steps, PB, PBIS, and mindfulness at the high school. And, um, they'll use a tiered system of interventions, um, but later on, we're gonna, in the opportunities for inquiry and growth, um, we'd like to address that a little bit further. I think the sixth grade teachers do a great job helping the sixth graders transition into the seventh grade program. And Lorne also started like summer camps for, um, incoming students. The Raiders Camps, which has been, which was very popular last year, and that was due to grant funding, um, that provided that. So when we go to opportunities for growth and inquiry in here, these are the ones, um, what I would like to focus on in, in general. Uh, we talked about the lack of diversity, and there's a real need for mental health interventions. Um, we do a good job of supporting students academically and socially, um, but emotionally, especially with COVID. Um, unfortunately, there's not many community resources available to adolescents. So like, um, mental health and drug and alcohol counseling, those types of things are really at a lim, at a, are very limited here in Western Massachusetts. Uh, paraprofessionals do a wonderful job, but we think with additional training, they could be, um, even br, even more productive. Um, as just as far as, um, how to maximize their time, um, they do a great job, but we'd like them to take a little bit more initiative than they do right now. Um, we do need a district mission and vision statement, which you already know about that. Um, at the middle, middle school and high school, um, a data analysis of the low-income special ed and high-needs subgroups would be very helpful to learn where their skill deficits are. Um, because identifying that will help to lower the dropout rate, which is, which is low, it's below nine percent. But I hate to see any student dropping out of school. Um, and mo, and mostly it is special ed or low-income students who are dropping out when they do. And it's only one or two a year. Um, we talked about the low Norris per pupil expenditures that we've been working hard on.
So just, on that point, though, so my numbers might be a little off, but I'm just using four hundred and thirty-six as our enrollment, give or take. So it, it does, there's a three thousand some odd dollar difference between us and the statewide average, right? So that, that's a one point six million dollar difference.
You said transportation.
But, no, I'm saying in order for us to get the statewide average, you take the three thousand X times the four hundred and thirty-six, it's a one point six million dollar increase of cash needed to go to Norris to get to the statewide average. We have small, relative small classes already. But even if we said, let's add one extra teacher for every grade, six teachers, seventy-five thousand, twenty-two percent fringe benefit for round numbers, not holding anybody to anything, that's only five hundred and twelve thousand dollars. Where would the other one point one million dollars go?
Yeah, and that's a great question. I'm sure Eliza has a, has a huge list. But when we look at spec.
Boiler number one.
When we look at spe, special ed and even, um, supports, right? And also like technology, um, there's a point five person doing technology when that, there's also not like a, you have, your tech, your technology person doesn't do curriculum work, like, so there's not a technology class that like New Hingham have. Um, those are the things that come right off the top of my head. And I don't know what electives or programming needs to.
But I, but I think.
My language program.
I think the, uh, right, but I'm, but I'm just saying, anybody, anybody at home is gonna do the, do the quick back-of-the-napkin math and say, well, one point six million, what do they need it for?
A lot of stuff.
So, I, I, it's not for this budget or that, but I'm just saying, if we're gonna, if we wanna take an aggressive campaign to go down and try and get it, we, we have to really tell a story, because that, that's a, that's a big, that's a big number.
I think you have to start showing what the other schools do have that enhances their.
Yeah, but I could shoot, I could shoot holes in what, any of the other elementary schools just by doing this. Is, they're covering all their basic costs, they still have smaller classes than I, we do. They could bring on more children and not increase cost. It's, it's when they have to actually start duplicating things like we have to do, three to four times per, on the classroom levels, right? The, and then their numbers will go down. The reason why they have so, they're so flush right now is because they don't need as large of an infrastructure as we do. They handle the volume, because some of these schools only have a hundred and twelve kids.
Yeah.
Right, over seven grades. But on the Norris side, and I do agree, we need to get the number up. But, um, I think.
But I think if you compare to a school that's similar in size to us, like outside our district, because you're looking at a state average. So look at a different school that's similar in size, what do they offer that Norris doesn't? A lot of these elementary schools are offering like more, greater music programs, arts, um, language, tons of language programs that don't exist here, that's important to start elementary school. Like, I've advocated for that before, we don't start language in, at seventh grade, and it's successful, it's not successful.
But I'm just, I'm sug, I'm suggesting that, because I don't think there's gonna be.
Think about the story.
I don't think there's gonna be a turnover on the school committee, right, in our election in two weeks. At least I hope not. So I, I think that might be one of our charges for next year, before the budget comes up, is, you know, how can we position this? And, and it's not necessarily just going back to the town for the money, because the town doesn't necessarily, the, the town doesn't have it. They don't have an extra one point six million sitting in their budget.
You don't?
But we also talked today about structurally, like, Eliza does everything. Um, like, today in our meeting, she had to leave to go manage student behaviors. Although there's an assistant principal, some of the behaviors just, um, require more support. And like facilities maintenance director, like, we didn't go to school to be HVAC experts, um, or cafeteria manager, or, or early childhood coordination, those kinds of things.
So, so now, so the argument, what I'm hearing there is that's supporting the regionalization. Because we don't need a facility director just for Norris. If we had a regional facility director, right? We have a regional IT director, but we do not have any regional IT support outside of the director, right? It's on the individual schools to do this. And, and I, I think we, we waste a lot of our own money just.
I purposely left the word regionalization out of this report. I did have it in originally a couple of times, I'm like, no, I, no.
Well, it's an intellectual exercise to discuss the benefits, right? Pros and cons and, yeah. I mean, there's also the opportunity to, I think there's been a push to be more evidence-based, but more funding could help it to, to increase team-based time so that students could be properly, uh, placed in interventions. Um, you know, some districts, like I think Allison mentioned, her district allows for, before, um, the school year starts, they have, you have a PD.
We have a whole week.
Right, so like, that would do a lot to get people up on, you know, how to really squeeze every last drop out of these curriculums that we've purchased, so.
The problem's not gonna go away, because Southampton Census grew by ten percent, just over ten percent. And if you look at the, at the recent data that shows the kids that are under the five years of age, right? The class sizes, just spread that evenly over the five years, you're, you're gonna have sixty to seventy to eighty kids coming up through the pipeline. And, and those are triggers that are gonna cause us to have to have more classrooms. Because we wanna be at the sixteen to eighteen per, well, less than that, right? We don't wanna be at twenty kids per class in a perfect world.
And I know you love the regionalization discussion, I just want you to keep in mind, because Norris salaries are so high.
Yes.
Well, you do, but then, um, if you have to pay that rate to all of the schools, you're, you're talking millions of extra.
Right, which is why no one else is ever gonna wanna do it. And, and so it's, it's, we, we get slammed because we, we pour so much money into our educators that nobody wants to come play baseball with us. And then we get slammed because we don't put enough money into the system, that nobody wants to come over here. And everybody thinks we're just trying to figure out a way to get other people to pay for our stuff. It's an, it's a no-win situation, but.
Yeah.
September's project.
Um, so when we look at other opportunities for growth, real quickly, um, we had a, uh, English language learner audit uh, that really said that we are really not meeting the needs of our English language learners. As far as there's no EL, uh, curriculum across, across the board. And they also advocate for a, um, a pull, uh, a a pull-out model, which is later on under the teaching and learning section, which will go on.
They're advocating for that? I thought they were trying to do away with that.
We'll get there in teaching and learning.
That's fine, I was just confused by that.
Yeah, we're spending, um, we just gave CES three thousand dollars to help us meet the needs. And you, you, I, I hate that we have to spend that much money that we can't figure it out on our own, but I think that was the quickest, easiest, easiest way to, to fix that. But we'll talk about that under, um, under that as well. Um, the essential questions going forward, uh, there is additional early childhood coordination is really necessary as well. The pre-K staff are outstanding, however, they really don't have enough time to be pre-K teachers, coordinate testing, registration, screening, outreach, and all of that as well. So the essential questions that'll guide our work I've listed there are, let's see. I'm trying to hurry this up, so you can read that for yourself. Essential questions are really about, um, how can we teach to the whole child? How can we have equity, uh, conversations to incorporate culturally responsive teaching strategies in our rooms? And how to develop a vision and mission? Um, so the next area is communication, collaboration, and con, connectedness. Some of the biggest strengths in this area. I can't even find my mouse, here we go. Great deal of institutional knowledge. Um, employees like Bobby have been here for a really long time, they know the history, what works, what doesn't work. And a really valuable asset here as well. The level of communication is really strong. Um, principals, uh, do a great job of meeting with their teachers, talking about student outcomes. Um, we're working on making the district admin team a little bit more cohesive and community partnerships with, you know, lo, all the local departments like police, fire, library, as well as, um, you know, Hilltown Community Centers. And I love that this year, that, um, Southampton Recreation League was expanding to include students from, um, the other district schools, as well as Chesterfield Goshens expanding their wrestling program. And I think they got like sixty or some ridiculously high number of students, which is wonderful. Because right now, I think at the high school, there's like three wrestlers. So what are the, uh, opportunities that we can grow on? Um, acting as one collaborative district, even if we are five distinct districts. Um, new staff have asked for, um, more onboard mentoring. We kind of throw a lot at them and, you know, see ya, good luck to ya. And although there is a mentoring program in place, it's kind of the, 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 new teachers say that it's kind of up to them to initiate whatever questions they have. And, you know, you don't know what you don't know. Um, so I think they would like that just to be a little bit, um, organized, a little bit differently. Increased collaborative planning time is always wonderful, especially when you're, when you're thinking horizontally, horizontally and vertically. Um, we are, we're working on building, um, a stronger relationship with building administrators and central office staff. Um, because there is just a, it's just easier to do it myself mentality. Um, so we're, we're trying to, we're working on that as well. So the essential questions are, how can we strengthen as an admin team? And what communication strategies can we leverage to more effectively engage all stakeholder groups? So teaching and learning is the biggie. So when we look at the strengths, a lot of evidence strengths. Our teachers are really strong in content area. Um, we talked about the strength in AP classes. We've gone from, uh, in FY twelve, thirty-seven tests in eight subjects, to now we have a hundred and sixty-nine tests in twenty-five subject areas, which is fantastic. Um, we are planning a countywide professional development day, which you already know. There is a strong desire to collaborate on sturning learning, student learning outcomes throughout all the, the school, schools. So everybody has a data team, but nobody, the data teams from the schools don't talk to each other to find out what's in the best interest to advance kids to su, better succeed at the high school level. Um, let's see. High integration and use of technology. Uh, the district's become a one-to-one device, which is costly, but, uh, it did raise some equity issues here. Um, just as far as, um, Eliza has a point five person, um, where a much smaller school has a one point oh. Um, it just doesn't seem right there. The Bridges curriculum has been vastly successful, and we just, we did receive the one-two-three grant. Um, active engagement in the selection of curriculum, low dropout rate. Some of the opportunities for growth in this category are, th, this is the area that I have the most concern in. Um, so expanding opportunities to identify best instructional practices. Um, and I really think that principals do a great job of being visible in their schools, but it's hard to be an instructional leader when you're, when you're worrying about facilities management and everything else that's going on with your job. The biggest challenge that our district has is the inconsistent approach to district-wide systematic assessment and review of our curriculum. Um, and I haven't been shy about voicing that, so we're, we're working really hard that that is the biggest goal going forward. Um, people seem dissatisfied with the professional development that's offered by the district. They're very happy with building-level professional development that the principals and PD committees organize. But at the district level, I think we can make, it's hard to make it engaging, um, accessible and differentiated to meet varying levels. Let's see. Teachers do check for understanding, um, but I haven't really seen much that they adjust instruction based on that. Um, and I don't know, there's not much use of formative assessments. Actually, I think Norris probably does it better than any elementary school that I've seen for formative assessments. But just, you know, is everybody understanding what we're doing? And the, the simple nod, there's other formative assessment techniques that are, are more, um, effective. So there are concerns regarding the lack of the English language curriculum and the use of the push-in support model. To remedy this, we've commissioned CES, um, and they would like to create co-teaching opportunities and pull-out EL classes. And you're, you're exactly right, because that was not the philosophy a few years ago.
That's the opposite. We went from pull-out to push-in.
Uh-huh.
And we have more than seventy percent ELL students, and we're, we do the exact opposite.
And that is, that is the philosophy, so why this was in this audit, I'm, I couldn't tell you, because you're right. Usually, push-in inclusion is the way. So we can ask, um, CES more about that. But essential questions that guide this area are right up there. How can we prioritize curriculum work? How can we publicly celebrate all of our successes? Including our positive school culture and high school, high student achievement? And how can we enhance professional development? Um, I really like that third question a lot. How can we vary instructional strategies to create a learning environment that is focused on student engagement and academic rigor? So I've talked about before, student engagement, just because a student is taking notes or looking, staring at the teacher who's talking, that's not active engagement. It's actually, um, speaking to their partner about what they're learning, um, speaking to the whole class, those kind, those types of instructional strategies, um, we're gonna work on. Uh, the next area, second to last area is strong community support and positive school culture. Uh, these are the big strengths that you see here, really robust PTO. Um, really gifted administrators that we have. Um, we've been lucky that we haven't had. We've been lucky that we haven't had, I know we've had budget cuts here in the past year, but relatively, the budgets have remained stable. The five district working agreement was a wonderful district approach, and we were going to continue to work on that. And that school committee members, such as John, participate on local boards is a huge asset to us as well. And it just increases the communication and transparency. So opportunities for growth, the five districts, we know that we want to talk about the shared central office costs, the equity issues, strengthening the district admin team, and that really principals are spending a lot of time. No, I'm on the wrong page. I'm sorry. I skipped the page there. All right, town and school relationships are nurtured. I kind of jumped right into governance and leadership. Yeah, the central questions to guide our work in that regard. How can we further advocate for revised Chapter 70 funding? That would recognize the unique needs of our small, I kind of skipped there. So let me just go back to governance and leadership. Strengths, these are the areas for growth. We just really need continuity and consistency. There's been a lot of change. We've had four superintendents in five years. Everybody has a different style, different expectations, just different leadership styles. So we just really need calmness, just to, so we all can get on the same page. So next steps going forward, as a district administrative team, we're going to look to develop a strategic plan for the next five years. And based on, these findings are kind of the basis of where we're going to go once we know where our opportunities of growth lie. And that's really going to govern what we do in the future, whether related to student achievement, teaching and learning, finance, school culture, or any future initiatives, it'll all be tied. You know, school improvement plans will be tied in with the district improvement plan, and my goals, all tied into the strategic plan moving forward. So we have a vision of where we see ourselves five years down the road. Are you guys awake? I'm sorry.
Yes.
Yeah.
Sorry if it was painful.
Questions or comments?
I feel like no.
Yeah, I think that it's helpful as a committee member and a parent and, you know, resident of the town to see this because it shows that the schools aren't static. Like, they're changing, they're learning, they're adapting, they're evolving. And, you know, it feels like this is a step towards stabilization because there's been so much transition, especially since all of us have been on this committee. Like, you know, a couple of weeks after I was on the committee, it was COVID and the school shut down. So ever since then, it's just been crazy upheaval and whatnot. So it's cool to see this and like, we're moving forward. We're going to be able to grow from where we are, which is already a decent place, but there's always room to do more things.
Good. So I like it. The, if you're planning on doing it, that's fine. But if you're not, could you print it as a PDF? And could we send it out through the Norris Blast to all the parents?
Sure.
And I think it would be good to probably send it with, I don't even think you need to do a cover letter, but send it to the, at least Southampton, the Board of Selectmen, and the Town Administrator. I like the fact that it puts all five side by side, doesn't really single anybody out. We're not just talking about Southampton as we go through here. It's just comparables, it's facts, it's numbers, it paints a picture. The fact that it's coming from you as the superintendent of schools in theory means it should be politically neutral, which it is. I just, I think on this side of the table, people will take the time to read it. And I think it'll help down the road. And to Austin's point, getting this out to the parents, you know.
Thank you. I will definitely do that.
Francine?
I think we go along the way to educating taxpayers who move up the leagues of the school floor. That's an important thing every time we come up for a budget vote. They may need a deeper understanding of what's been done and what the potential is for the school if we make a greater investment.
Yep.
Thank you for that suggestion.
And then once you do that, we can take it and throw it up on the community forum pages and get it over to our town moderator, who can put the link in his newspaper that goes out every other day to the citizens. Okay? So I believe we are ready for the first reading of acceptable use policy file IJNDB.
We do have Kim Florak here. Kim, if you want to talk to us about the acceptable use policy, but would you like to share something with the committee?
Sure. I hadn't intended to be where I am today, but an opportunity presented itself to me recently. And I threw my hat in the ring for the director of technology position for the town of Long Meadow. And I accepted the position. So I am, it's with mixed emotions. I've been here for 18 years. I really enjoyed what I've done here. I enjoy the people I've worked with. I've got to meet a lot of people, make some close friendships. I moved to town. I moved to town with my children because of my work. So it's been deeply rewarding to be here. But there was a, this is a career move for me. It is the next step for me in my career. So while I'm sad to leave, I'm also very excited to start a new journey.
But to be clear, you're going to stay as a resident and a parent at night?
I was just going to say, are you moving to Long Meadow?
Oh, yeah. I want to thank you, committee. You guys have been great so far.
Thank you, Kim. Well, unfortunately, but best of luck. And now we know who can run for office.
Yeah.
We'll give you to the next election.
Did you want to talk about acceptable use?
Yeah, sure.
Is this replacing an existing policy?
There is an existing policy that we have. It's extremely old.
Okay.
It's so old, it's not even really worth comparing with the old policy and the new policy.
Gotcha.
The old policy goes back so far.
Okay.
So the acceptable use policy, the type that we have right now, the basis of that policy is based on the NASC recommended policy. So you have that for reference as well. Everything in the NASAC policy is reflected in the draft proposal for the acceptable use policy, except for, I think, the very last paragraph on the NASC policy, which looks more procedural than policy. So I didn't even look. It talks more about a procedure than a policy. And the policy was sent to the attorney office for review. Kimberly said it looked great. It looked good. Got her sample approval. It was presented to the Hampshire Regional School Committee on Monday night. They had their first reading. And the feedback so far was that the one word that they really wanted to take out. I don't hope that for some reason it's a negative, negative word.
Yeah, it's struck.
Vocable?
Yeah.
Vocable, yes. So that's, that got, there was discussion around taking that wording out. I think it's a much better policy. I think it gets rid of a lot of procedural stuff, which doesn't really belong in policy. And just looking for your feedback.
Yeah, we're, Kim is discussing this with all the committees, so it's one HRSD policy.
Yeah, we're hopeful, you know, in the spirit of equity, I guess, in some degree, that, you know, kids are subject to the same types of policies, regardless of what school they're in. And when they come up to the high school, from the elementary schools, the rules don't change. So for consistency, you know, I'm hopeful that we can really approve the same policy at front of the board.
Okay, questions or discussion?
Thank you for doing this, Kim.
That looks good.
Okay. So procedurally, we can't approve on the first reading.
Next time.
But the fact that there's no questions makes it sound like it's going to sail through the second reading?
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll accept this as the first reading. We'll schedule the second reading at our next regularly scheduled meeting, where we'll anticipate taking action. Now, we have, under other new businesses, is there any other?
I have one item.
Yes, Mr. Rogers.
It seems like the, not a long one. It seems like, I'm not going to Long Meadow. Just in case you're on here. The superintendent's evaluation meeting, I'm not able to attend. And so was looking to see if anyone else would be able to attend that instead of me.
So let me tell you a little bit more about that. We're having a very hard time getting one representative from every committee, period, and all agreeing on a time. So every night, Monday through Thursday night, we've got some kind of school committee meeting or negotiations or something. And I would prefer not to meet on a Friday night. So then we were thinking maybe during the day, we'd have better luck. So I think, John, is it next Thursday?
At 9:20. And I think that's what's triggering the...
That's what's, a lot of people, they're at work.
Yeah, they can't do the evening, but I got, nobody wanted to come to the evenings either. So I don't know what we want to do. I mean, I don't think we need to stress about this, that the evaluation doesn't have to be done by June. I think if we wanted, you know, August, September, because I don't know when we're going to, when we can get all those people together with all the meetings coming up right now.
How many meetings are needed for the evaluation? Like, what, how many meetings are...
I know. I'm not sure. So at the first meeting, they'll identify, and I'm not, I don't attend those meetings. I ask the attorney if I should or shouldn't. I think Margaret Larson was going to get everybody started. And then, once the chair, it's up to you guys to decide. But I think the first meeting, they really just wanted to talk about the questions that they want to ask various stakeholders and how you're going to go about doing the evaluation. But going forward, in September, you'll have a representative to the all districts committee that will take on this responsibility, which we hope will be the vice president, vice chairs of every school committee. So it's just really, we need somebody for the next few months. I didn't really answer your question, because I'm not really sure.
Why don't we do it, unless you're opposed to it, why don't we do it like we did the all district? Where you remain the primary, but we assign an alternate?
But they would have to be able to attend the first.
Well, I know. So, I mean, worst case, I'll do it. Well, I, let me check with, because...
I'll be teaching.
You guys are both conflicted. You can't make it during the day. Yeah, so, you know, either, let me see. If he, worst case, if he can't do it, then I'll go.
Or we can, yeah, I get the morning. I agree. That's what I was trying to do. We will need a, I think it already came out, about a school committee meeting about transportation.
There was one, something emailed to us, wasn't there?
Yeah, so I think we're doing that, like, it's either 5:00 or 5:30, because there was, I can't remember. Is that Monday?
I saw one, but I thought it only went to the chairs.
No, I thought we couldn't do Monday because Chesterfield, we have Chesterfield's town meeting.
I think we made that for...
And if we were originalized...
Yeah, you're right.
We put that up. That's Thursday.
How many more times are you going to use that word tonight?
We're not being taped.
A few anyway, right? Yeah, so there's going to be a Zoom school committee meeting, 12th. That's next Thursday at 5:30 to discuss transportation. And then I believe we were going to go into executive session to discuss central office contracts.
That's, that's all five committees, so...
On 5:12 Thursday at 5:30?
Yeah, so I know I'm conflicted and Dylan's conflicted.
I don't think I can do 5:30 either, because I think I went until 6:00.
Okay.
Not able to do it, so we wouldn't be there.
Yeah, I did get the...
Because you're on vacation, right? Or you're away?
Next week, I'm away.
And then the question is, does there have to be a quorum of each school committee, too? I think this was the only committee that gave a top percentage. Right? I don't think anybody else did. They didn't, but it would still be, I mean, I would still like... Well, yeah, exactly. But that's a very good... I don't know that it necessarily requires a vote, but...
If, well, again, if we were the most restrictive, as long as you're not looking to exceed 5% this year in this year's upcoming budget, you'd be within the guidelines we set.
Right, but what if she sets a three-year contract? Right.
But she, we know she's negotiating a three-year contract. We just said our budget's already set. We're capped at 5%. We can't go above 5% without consent, because we'd have to, we'd have to do something to the backend. Now hypothetically, if you were to spread that or do something like that, I think years two and three are next year's budget problem.
Okay. And you're good with that as a committee?
Speaking as myself, yes, I am.
I said as a committee. As a committee? Is the committee okay with that?
Yes.
I think that's the only way we're going to make it work. So it's a moot point. We won't need the meeting if, other than if you wanted to do the executive session, unless it's, I can't get it, 5 or under. Yeah, we're meeting on, I'm accompanying Bobby. Bobby's really going to be, she's a better poker player than I am. She'll, we're meeting them at 1 o'clock, no, 11 o'clock on Monday, on Monday. So we can, we can shoot you an email, let you know how that went.
Yeah, let them know that, about, you know, the number of parents that are outraged about the accident that happened.
I did not get one nasty email. I'm not, just to be funny.
They don't need to know that.
Yeah, don't offer that.
You're negotiating here. Don't offer that.
I thought about it. I honestly did, because I already knew about it from...
That accident will work in our favor. I'll do what I can. I'm not afraid to. You know, you're right, and we might just send out an email on Monday, just to say where we are with the transportation.
You might want to double-check with Kim, but that was my, my understanding of the vote that we took, the guidance that we took, is that you went out to bid for a three-year deal. And one of the options was allow you to negotiate the three-year deal, but you couldn't enhance the coverage anymore, right? You could only bring it down. And that next year, because we had already set our budget and put it at 5, that you couldn't go above 5 without coming back, so that we could go and make sure that, just say it was 5 and 1/2, we could make sure that the numbers would work on our end before we got surprised. So three-year contract, and it's not above 5% in year one, you're in compliance with the direction we gave you, would be my view.
Okay. And all the other budgets, you, did you, I forgot what number you put in, was only 3%? No, 5%. You did put in 5%, okay, sorry, I couldn't recall.
Well, I think maybe, is Southampton the only one that pulls it out?
Yes.
Yes, so that's, it's not a school committee issue. So all the other communities, if you go above 5, they've got to find the money within their budgets. Us, it's not us. We have to go to the town side and say, which is why we have to be delicate on how we do that piece.
Sounds like it will work out, though. We're optimistic.
Okay. So, does that answer your question about next week and the superintendent's evaluation?
Yes.
You'll still be the point person, but one of us will be there, knowing you can't.
For next week.
Yeah, and then if it goes to a night and something, you can jump back on it?
Hmm.
Anything else for new business, anyone?
No.
All right, so we have the second readings of the four policies. We can, if anybody wants to make modifications to any of them, we should take them separately. If there are no objections and somebody wants to make a motion, take all four up collectively and vote to accept them, we can do it as a package.
I thought they were fine.
Second, no objection, do it as a package? Okay. So we'll take up second reading for policy ACA, policy which is non-discrimination on the basis of sex. Policy ACAB, sexual harassment definition and procedures. Policy AC, non-discrimination policy including harassment and retaliation. And policy IHBIB, policy for selection of participants in the integrated preschool program. Again, second reading, and I believe these are just updated versions of existing policies that are already in place. So there's a motion made to take them up.
Second.
Seconded. Any discussion? No. All in favor? Aye, opposed. Policies now become effective May 5. Reports, principals report.
So our reunification drill is set for May 13. MCAS for ELA and math is complete, with the exception of a few kiddos who need to take makeup tests due to their absences. Grade 5 will take science and technology next week, and then we will be done. Teachers from East Long Meadow, as Deanna Bonneville mentioned, will be observed... will be observing our grade five math teacher, Mrs. Burke, because they are interested in possibly purchasing the Verdas program. So I think that's great that they're coming here to kind of watch and see what happens. There's just a list of upcoming events here. I just want to, this was in the last report, but if it already happened, I took it off. So now this is, these are the things that are happening between May 12th and June 16th, with grade six step update June 15th. Our enrollment hasn't changed since, oh, oh, since April. You, you have an updated one there, right? Because I screwed it up when I sent it to Rachel and I had the April one, so we changed it and she included it in the packet, which is great. And then Dr. Bonneville asked us, principals, to kind of give a little overview about what we're doing this school year with social emotional learning curriculum in our buildings. So I have a whole, like a page and a half of what we're doing to help support students with social, emotional, and behavioral supports. So for the most part, for, for, for all students who are using the Second Step program. And the Second Step program promotes school success, school connectedness, safe and respectful school climate by directly teaching students the skills to strengthen their abilities to learn, have empathy, manage emotions, and solve problems. And it's really divided into four major areas, which are skills for learning, which is how to regulate your emotions, thoughts, and behaviors, and why empathy matters. And empathy is a key ingredient in the development of positive social behaviors. So we help students identify, understand, and respond in a caring way to how someone is feeling. And emotional management, where we help students recognize strong feelings and use calm down techniques or strategies to stay in control. And problem solving, so teaching students to problem solve helps them reduce impulsive behavior, improve social competence, friendships, and prevent violence. So each day, I think I have mentioned this before, I, I make an announcement, or Mrs. Lukasiewicz does, my vice principal, over the intercom that has something to do with one of these four areas, depending on the scope and sequence that we developed for the teachers in the classroom. So whatever the teachers are teaching in the classroom, maybe it's lessons about empathy that week, our announcement on the intercom has something to do with empathy. So the kiddos are hearing it in class, they're hearing it from us. And one of our goals in our school improvement plan, which Austin will probably update you on, is to reinstate our behavior management team, which hadn't met because of COVID last year and everything. They're the ones that picked the Second Step program, you know, after speaking to the rest of the staff. But what we used to do is have school-wide assemblies for some of these topics and show students and model for students what, what it means to have empathy or what it means to problem, problem solve. And we used to use some of our sixth grade students to kind of do skits with the kids. So we'd like to do that on a smaller level, not have everybody in the cafeteria or in the gym. We would do it by grade levels. Another way we are supporting students this year is through a growth mindset. And Mrs. Lukasiewicz has going into sixth grade, I have mentioned before, and talking about growth mindset, which, and having conversations and shared strategies to develop the lifelong learning process of having a growth mindset. She has brought this to the sixth grade classes each week, which is great. We're also exploring the pyramid model in preschool and kindergarten. The pyramid model is an approach and social emotional foundation that looks at a pyramid of things. Children need to succeed in school. So the bottom layer of the pyramid is making sure that all students are safe and comfortable in their environment and their relationships. So we want all students to feel safe and comfortable at school in a positive classroom environment. And then as you move up the pyramid, you might have more intensive individual support for students. And this approach also is, fits nicely with the Second Step program. So it's, the pyramid model is more of what the teachers are doing, and the Second Step is more about what kids are doing. And this started in preschool, but we've moved it up to kindergarten this year. And it was really just a voluntary basis for kindergarten teachers because I didn't want to throw one more thing, and we just learned about hegemony, we're learning about open court. We just implemented Second Step this year as well. So I said, you know, if you want to come to the after-school meetings, come, but it's not mandatory at this time. But many people have an interest in it. And then the other thing is, Mrs. Lukasiewicz has visited all fourth, fifth, and sixth grade classes to show anti, an anti-bullying video. In the past, we only did this in fifth grade. But because of COVID last year, fifth grade didn't see it, so we brought it to sixth grade. And then we, because of the behaviors that we're seeing this year and some of the bullying that's happening, we brought it down to fourth grade. So we sent out a parent permission slip that their child is able to watch this video. And then she has a good discussion with the kids about what bullying looks like and, and hurtful things and online stuff. It's been really good. I think that, just like many people are articulating throughout the state and the country, our behaviors are, are very challenging this year. And we're trying to do everything we can to teach, model, and have students do the right thing. So.
Second Step is in preschool too, right? You're doing?
Yeah.
Okay. I thought so.
I just said K to six for kids.
Other questions? I have a, so last day for students is June 16th. Is the last day for the faculty, June 17th?
Yes.
The Friday after?
Yep.
And I know you and I talked earlier in the year and then it slipped off, but this is reminding me. Do you still want to, do you still want a local business in town to volunteer for a shred day?
Yes, yes.
From the 17th? Would that work?
That would be great.
All right.
We could do that.
Volunteer for what?
So, go ahead, Josh.
So we, we have, the, the, my day job, I actually have one. So we, we often partner with one of our clients, Valley Green Shredding, and they'll send a bulk truck that, that the agency will cover the cost of. And they'll arrive on site and you can get rid of, you know, we're also gonna throw it out to the community, come down through the, like, the pack, and they can drop off two boxes of shreddable stuff, security and all that stuff. But it just, in a conversation Eliza and I had, one of the things was, a lot of things are just stored up with paper that needs to be shredded and got rid of. So if, if they could arrange to get it out in the hallways, that, if the teachers could, then perhaps the custodial staff would go up and down the hallway with-
All those IEPs and, oh, it's incredible. They just did a shred day last weekend.
Yeah, but not at the school, for the school, and so the-
Specifically for, yeah.
Right. All right, so I'll work on it.
I thought you were volunteering for the dump tank.
Where?
Field day.
Field day.
Let's go.
Field day.
Oh, that would be great.
Is that on here?
First in line.
First in line. I only take hundred-dollar bills.
First and last, right?
Just figured out how we're gonna raise this 1.3 million. All the South Hampton elected officials on the dump booth. Okay. All right, so I'll be in touch with you on that one. All right, if there's nothing else, next is superintendent's report.
Yeah, mine's pretty short. I spent most of April working on that entry plan findings. We do have one retirement from Norris, and that's Loretta Gallo, who's been here for six years. Pool testing's gonna end on June 6th. We have seen a slight uptick in the last month, but not as bad as some of our neighboring towns have been. School committee meeting with the chairs, we really discussed transportation and, and what that would look like. Sharing my entry plan findings, that was really it. I did, did want you to know that I did send two letters on all of our behalf. One asking for the free lunch to continue for FY '23. I think all the superintendents were sending something in. And then I sent another one to amend the FY '23 house budget to remove the inflation cap, to change it. So it, it's capped at 4.5. And if they raise it to where they would like, it potentially could bring in millions of more dollars to schools across the state. And today we had a, was that today? Yeah, there was a DESI phone call with the commissioner where we, while subgroup targets were given for MCAS, they're not gonna use them. And they're resetting the MCAS baseline, so that's, that's important news to know. Also, I'm not sure of the numbers of, in our district of chronic absenteeism, but they did. It used to be 10%, 18 days, and now they increased that to thirty, for students, 36 days or more.
Is that just for one year because of the pandemic?
Yep.
And then there's copies of the letters, of the communications that you sent in?
Yeah, I think they should be in there.
Any questions on that? Okay, next is the chair's report. We did, we did meet last, we ended up meeting last week for two and a, two and a half hours. It's become my new therapy sessions. But we went over the transportation, we went over the, we, we got the first look at the re-entry plan that was presented tonight. And Dr. Bonneville shared with us some other things that will be coming up in the near future for committees to consider after we get through the summer break. So again, the chair's is just, they seem to go for a long period of time, but we really, I think it's good because at, at the very minimum, at least the five chairs of the committees have a pretty sound understanding of where everyone's going and, and how we're gonna get there, since we don't, for obvious reasons, attend every single school committee meeting. It's, it's a good way to get the group together and just have open dialogue.
Yep.
So, and then that's usually like the third or fourth Thursday of the month in the morning. Hampshire, Dylan's not here for Hampshire Regional School Committee, so we'll pass on that. PTO?
They have not met yet. I believe it's gonna be next week, but they haven't said. They are doing their spring fair. Are they meeting before that? They haven't emailed anybody, so as far as I know, they're not.
Because normally they would meet next week.
Yeah, and there hasn't been any?
I don't know.
Well, they want, they wanted us to meet before them, so we did.
Yeah. They didn't announce the next date, so I'm not sure.
School council?
School council met yesterday and we're in the final stages of the school improvement plan. The idea is to have it for two years, so some of the initiatives, goals, and objectives are already being implemented, but more time is needed to fully achieve them. So that, hence the, the two-year timeline. So we should have a final draft, I anticipate, pretty soon.
June, yep.
Okay, and the collaborative?
They have not met since we last met here, so they, I think, meet later this month.
Okay. And any update from the select board? Francine?
Okay, just briefly, they've started, everyone knows that the annual town meeting is removed from May 3rd, passed, to June 7th at 7:00 PM, and you all know it's me at Norris. This date was chosen to avoid having to have a, a, a town, annual town meeting in May and then a special town meeting in June, just because we didn't have all of our information together to make some decisions, for the town to make some decisions. So we decided on the, on moving, consolidating and doing that meeting instead of two. We're continuing our work on the fiscal '23 budget, which we'll likely finalize at our next joint meeting with the finance committee on May 10th, next week. We're in the process of finalizing the warrant, which in addition to the school budget that will be in there, includes capital funding for mason repairs and roof repairs for Norris, both at the levels that were requested. And I just want to mention, for anyone who's interested, there's kind of a, an interest, well, a review of all of the articles in the warrant that's conducted prior to each annual town meeting by the town moderator, and that's scheduled for May 26th at 7:00. It's a good way for people to understand.
And that'll be live on YouTube.
It will be broadcast as well, recorded and broadcast. But it's a good way for people to get an understanding and a preview of what decisions they'll be making at that meeting for that part. And that's it. I just, let you know, it was $125,000.
Okay.
And you guys had mentioned that the ARPA decision is in two weeks, potentially?
Uh, initial discussion.
Yeah.
Initial discussion.
They're looking either at the sixth week or the seventh week. Depending on people's availability.
The thought at the last meeting was that, because really the priority is the budget.
Right.
And we have a little bit more work to tweak on that, to get that out for the June 7th meeting, then immediately go into ARPA discussion. So as soon as we get that done.
So any idea when the ARPA decision?
I would say it's, I mean-
I don't even know how many applications have come in yet. We haven't seen them all.
Norris's numbers one through four, if that helps.
So like, is it gonna be two, three, four meetings on that?
It, I, well, again, I, the, we have, this money's coming in over a two-year period.
Yeah.
Right, and three different trants. We have the first tran, second tran should be coming in fairly soon. And the budget gets pa, so I, my, I'm thinking, specifically because of ARPA and how Norris is looking to use it tied into their budget, that I don't see that vote being prolonged. So I would think, you know, probably sometime in July.
That's what I was curious about.
We didn't at least look for a vote as to whether we're gonna be able to do it or not.
Right, because then we can make-
Yeah, but I, I know there are several select board members that are aware that this is tied into the start of school. And obviously, we don't want to wait till the week before because some of it's funding for positions, right? That need to be advertised and-
Thank you.
Yep. Anything else? Okay.
Motion to adjourn?
There's a motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
Segred without discussion, all fair, aye?
Aye.
Well done. 7:49, we are adjourned.
This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.